Each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or to question district employees. I want to remind everyone that state and federal student privacy laws prevent the district from disclosing information related to any student, and you will not be permitted to discuss individual students during the public participation period. So Andy, if you'd like to start us off.
Sure. Our first participant will be James.
Keith, thank you for that interesting presentation and insight. We've got the right person in that role. That's a lot of complex data, and you made it simple to follow, so thank you, sir. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak. Dr. Emhoff, last summer, after a brief exchange of email, you were kind enough to have Carla, your executive assistant, schedule a 30-minute phone conversation with me. Your time was so appreciated, especially when considering all the chaos you were dealing with regarding COVID-related matters. During our pleasant 30-minute call on July 13th, we specifically discussed getting the kids in school as early as possible, as frequent as possible. And one thing we learned when it comes to COVID, one thing has been proven true: one can find statistics to support his or her position on whether they have kids in school full-time, part-time, or hardly on remote learning. Simply stated, stats can be found to support or dispute whatever position one would like to take on the COVID matter. Here are some stats that cannot be disputed. According to the State Performance Index, UA schools were ranked 26th in 2015, and in 2018, UA schools were ranked 65th. That means 39 other school districts passed Upper Arlington in the state rankings in 36 short months. That decline is horrendous, and that decline occurred on your watch, Dr. Emhoff. How is that even possible in a community with the financial resources that Upper Arlington has and with the exceptional, high-quality teachers and administrators that work in this community? I could not wrap my mind around that mind-boggling decline in our state rankings. So I attempted to better educate myself as to how this occurred, and while I will never be accused of being an education industry expert, I am a person that does his best to evaluate a situation over a period of time based upon firsthand observations and real facts. And I'm a person that reaches conclusions based upon watching another person in action more than listening to that other person talk. Simply stated, actions speak louder than words. And what have I have concluded that Dr. Emhoff has been focused on? On executing from an educational perspective over the past five years, at which time our state rankings have continued to decline? In my opinion, answers can be found when you read through the Upper Arlington School District's strategic plan. Simply put, what are the key initiatives being set by Dr. Emhoff and filtered down to administrators and teachers to focus on when interacting with our students? According to the strategic plan in 2015, key initiatives were performance, accountability, and ownership. And what are the key initiatives transitioned to in recent years? Phrases like "whole learning" and "culture of continuous improvement." I am not educated enough on the nuances of our curriculum, nor am I educated on gender-neutral studies, but what I can conclude is that Dr. Emhoff, while noble in some of his efforts, has entirely shifted the district's focus away from preparing students for matters that most impact state rankings. Do not misunderstand me, as Jason Fine and his awesome team always emphasize to all students at Jones Middle School, "be kind." Yes, we all want kids to grow into well-rounded, kind, young adults, but we also have expectations and the resources to ascend back to the school rankings, and we should not lose focus on that key initiative until we reach the top 20 in state rankings. This is obtainable, and it's obtainable in a short period of time with the right leadership at the helm dispersing out the appropriate key initiatives in the annual strategic plan. With that initiative in mind, I ask you, Dr. Emhoff, to do what is best for the district's students and resign your post as school superintendent this evening and allow this school board in our community to begin the process of identifying a superintendent that will put a refocus on our students' education and our district's state rankings instead of a focus on resume-enhancing bullet points that might earn you accolades with today's council culture, sir. Thank you.
Questions?
Our next individual is Tara. All right, our next individual is Kathy. Oh, she's outside? She should be able to. Why isn't she coming? Go ahead, Kathy.
Hi, Kathy Pults, and today I am speaking about the school board's failure to follow Ohio's Sunshine laws. The Ohio Meeting Act states, quote, "A public body may not take any formal action such as voting or otherwise reaching a collective decision in an executive session. Any formal action taken in an executive session is invalid. This school board has never discussed changing building code in public. There are no minutes discussing a change in the original architectural plan or choosing to go to court to change the Ohio Building Code. The school board obviously made the decision to go to the Ohio Board of Building Appeals to change code. You obviously made a decision to go to Franklin County Common Pleas Court. You obviously decided to appeal to the 10th District Court of Appeals, and you obviously chose to spend almost $200,000 to change the code. Yet not once have the bathrooms been discussed at a public session. How can a decision that impacts every single student in the district for the next 50 years not have a public discussion or vote? Earlier today, you mentioned it was at community meetings. Community meetings are not a public board meeting. In the beginning, I was told that the school board voted on the architectural plans as a whole, and it included only gender-neutral bathrooms. I found the documents, and this was not correct. Now, we have the architect Moody Nolan confirming what I have been saying for months. In a letter dated March 24, 2021, just a few weeks ago, the architect Seidzerainen states, "One, the plans originally approved by the city are identified for use by a specific sex. With this request, the school board is requesting the city to approve that some of these toilet rooms be relabeled as all-gender." Zerainen clearly states the original plans were labeled by specific sex. "Six," he then states, "the school board requests..." When did you request this? In a secret meeting, or are we supposed to assume that Zerainen is doing what he wants? This decision was not in a public session. At what point do you start following the law? First, the bathrooms are labeled against the Ohio Building Code. Secondly, you have made many decisions in executive session. This is against Ohio law as well. And what other decisions are you making behind closed doors? I will repeat what I have been saying for months. UA needs the most inclusive bathroom options for all children. They deserve a choice in the academic wing of girl bathrooms, boy bathrooms, or a gender-neutral bathroom. Let every child feel safe and comfortable. By speaking the truth, I have been vilified and libeled by a small group of small-minded people. Their attempt to silence and suppress our views should frighten all of you. But on the other hand, I have received encouragement and support from many families far outnumbering the bullies. I've met many incredible people who are fighting with me for all of our children, and tonight I found it unbelievable that some of you have just called me a bigot for wanting all kids to choose and for you to follow the law. But I have one more question. How does it feel to be the school board and superintendent overseeing the decline of our once-stellar school district? I know families who are moving out of Upper Arlington, or they're pulling their kids and sending them to private schools, or they're homeschooling because of the bathroom debacle as well as the district's inability to put the education of children first. Making your decisions in secret has splintered our community. Academics have taken a backseat to national agendas and social engineering. We have dropped from 26th in the state in 2014 to 65th in the Ohio Performance Index, and we would not be the only school that has kids who walked out of the test. Even as the rankings were in a freefall, the superintendent created a new strategic plan that no longer focused on academics. The superintendent's pandemic strategy has amplified his lack of leadership and creativity. Our children have suffered, and there is no trust between the community and schools. There is no confidence in the superintendent, and we are in desperate need of a change. It is time for a new superintendent who will put children first and reestablish Upper Arlington schools as the best in the state. Thank you.
Our next individual is Beth. Oh, are you? Yep, are you Tara? Please, Tara, go ahead.
Hi again. My name is Tara Wood, and today I want to share a little bit about myself. I have a degree in psychology with a minor in marriage and family. I have my master's in child development from Tufts University. I've been a special education teacher for children with sensory and emotional disorders. I have been a regular third-grade classroom teacher in a high-impact school. I was the executive director of a nonprofit that did infant through teen parenting education. I have worked with youth at risk, including those referred to me by court systems, and I have been hired professionally by private and public schools as a consultant for my expertise in developmentally-appropriate behavior management strategies. I'm only sharing this with you so you know that I'm not just another parent who has three students affected by your decisions in this district. I share this so you know that I actually do have some expertise behind the concerns of the developmental impact that your continued decisions, or lack thereof, are having on the children of Upper Arlington. I'm sure when you all decided to run for school board, you never imagined your job would throw you into a crazy situation like this past year and a half. Because of this, most of us, myself included, were willing to give you grace in the beginning. But as the months dragged on, it became more and more clear that the group of people we had chosen to act on our behalf were often incapable or unwilling to represent the community and certainly the best interests of children. You deferred your decisions to a county health department, which, the word is now out, has its school COVID guidance almost exclusively written and reviewed by local superintendents and teacher union members, including our own Paul Emhoff. How convenient that school leadership got to write the school health guidance and then say, "Hey, we're just following the rules." When it came time to form a handpicked medical advisory board, you also deferred to these individuals that we, as a community, had not elected or had any say in their selection. But not only that, it did not occur to any one of you to include a pediatric mental health expert on the board until parents started begging you to consider the mental health of our children. And now here we are again. Instead of you taking the initiative and lifting outdoor mask restrictions, it's the parents who once again have to bring it to your attention. I have been corresponding with one of you over the last couple of days, and it has been discouraging to see every single excuse for why kids must suffer three more weeks despite no medical justification or a mandate that it needs to be this way. I have even heard that members of this board have told other residents how exasperated they are, that parents would still want to fight for their children when there are only three weeks left. Have you ever been away from a child you know well for three weeks and observed how much they seem to change just in that short amount of time once you saw them again? When we're discussing child development, months, weeks, and, yes, days matter. Already, child psychologists are concerned at the social and emotional impact that children constantly wearing masks is going to have on them, an impact we may still see the effects of decades from now. So much of social and emotional development is based on facial expressions, feeling heard and hearing others, picking up on social cues, and feeling safe and accepted in a group. We have literally been taking this away from our kids for over a year, and this doesn't concern anyone? Their ridiculously low risk of getting COVID outside is more worrisome to you than the risk of the damage we're doing to them developmentally? There is absolutely no reason why they need to wear a mask outside, none. I sent you all an article today, from a liberal journalist even, published in the less-leaning New York Times. Hopefully, you had a chance to read it. It explains the numbers and how ridiculously minuscule the risk of catching COVID outdoors is. Add to this that children are lowest-risk spreaders, schools are one of the safest places to be when it comes to COVID spread, not one single case of COVID has been traced back to originating in UA schools, teachers are vaccinated, families are vaccinated, and our community COVID numbers are amazingly low. Digging our heels in and not allowing our children to play and exercise outside in the heat without a mask seems absurd. I am the parent. I have the ultimate responsibility for the health and safety of my children, not you. Let me choose whether or not my child can take their mask off outside. Let other parents choose to keep it on theirs if they don't want to believe the science. But let us make the decision. Let us, as parents, make the decision. Lift the outdoor mask restriction tonight, like many other districts across Ohio have already done. Do it for the health and the development of our children. Thank you.
Our next individual is Beth.
Can you hear my name? I'm cheering. So I'm representing about 40, 50 people out there in the lobby that you guys may not know are out there, so. Hello, my name is Beth Ba, and I am the mother of two girls. And there's a delay, if you're wondering why the cheering is at a weird time, because there's a little time delay. So I'm the mother of two girls that live here in the district. And I'm not here tonight to try to persuade you, the members of the board, to do anything. Frankly, I think you've all been put in a very unfortunate and unfair position. I think we all can agree that this past year was far more than any of you signed up for or are capable of managing, so I'm here tonight to do the board a favor and take this heavy burden off your shoulders and place it where it belongs, on us, the parents. So please hear me, parents of Upper Arlington School District. I am here tonight to try to persuade you to do something, because, let's be honest, it's been a year, and the only thing this board has proved capable of doing is outsourcing every decision they make to unelected bureaucrats at the county, state, and federal levels. They have proven unwilling or unable to participate in the exercise of critical or independent thinking. Heaven forbid, they would even entertain the idea of allowing the parents of the community who elected you, who you represent, to make our own informed decisions for our children. We know what's best for them in the immediate, long-term, mental, physical, spiritual, emotional health of our children. Please, listen to us. History will show that this UA school board, their unelected committees, and their spineless leaders were on the wrong side of these issues consistently. They kept, you kept kids out of school too long, you implemented the most ineffective hybrid schedules in the country, and our children never should have been masked in the first place, and they certainly shouldn't still be wearing masks now. So, back to the parents, the time is now for each parent to take back the authority that is rightfully ours. You do not need to ask permission. You do not need to be a doctor, or an epidemiologist, or a public health specialist. You don't have to have any credentials after your names, because the only letters that come that are important when it comes to your child is M-O-M and D-A-D. If you, as a parent, think the best thing for your child is to have their mouth and nose obstructed with a bacteria-infested rag for eight hours a day, then by all means, send your kid to school with a mask on. If you, as a parent, think the best thing for your child is not to have their mouth and nose obstructed with a bacteria-infested rag for eight hours a day, then you should stop sending your kid to school with a mask on. So, this is at great cost. I understand. My daughter was a third grader at Tremont Elementary last year, but when I saw the decisions that this school board was making, I made the decision to homeschool her. So I had to quit my job, I had to put law school on hold, all because I will not, under any circumstances, allow my nine-year-old to have a mask on all day, just like I wouldn't let her be in an untested car seat, or an untested toy, or an untested anything. There is no scientific proof that the lowest risk for COVID, our children, should have a mask on. So, we decided to homeschool her, and after a disastrous first semester for my high schooler, we decided to homeschool her too. So because Upper Arlington schools profoundly failed my children, I will never send my child to a UA school again. And yes, my kids don't have to wear a mask, but it breaks my heart every day to see UA kids masked up, even on recess. I think, what if the parents were given an option? And maybe, there are many people out there who don't agree with me, and maybe my opinion is in the minority around here, but if there is even one person listening, and you need to know you are not alone, you are not crazy, you are not heartless, you are not careless, you are a parent, and you can stand up for what's right for your child, take the masks off, this school board won't do it for you. Thank you.
Next individual is Maria.
Hi there. My name is Marissa. I'm a mother of two beautiful children, and I'm raising here in Upper Arlington, Ohio. They're the ages of five and seven. I'm here today to let you know I have many jobs to juggle, and my number-one job, the most important job, in my opinion, is to protect, cultivate, and empower my children. That said, I know you juggle many jobs as well. So, folks, Superintendent, Board of Education, you have been focusing too much on everything except your number-one job. Your job is to ensure high standards in education for our children. So, folks, I'm here to remind you of that job, to remind you that you work for me and this community. This, I'm here to remind you that your focus and your number-one should be education to the children of this community. It seems to me, based on the recent release of school rankings, that UA is not focusing on their number-one objective, which should be education. Perhaps you have been more focused on mandates, bathrooms, and everything but educating our children. But let me get to my concern today, which is my child's safety regarding masks. Masks are not neutral. They do biological, sociological, and psychological harm to children. The studies on this topic of harm done from masks over the past year are adding up so significantly that it's almost impossible for anyone to say that they can wear a mask safely. We need to stop experimenting on our children. I'm not asking you to pick what's right for everyone. Rather, I'm here to remind you to allow me to do my job as a mother in knowing what is right for my child. So, give us, moms, regardless of the choice, the right to do the number-one job. Give us the ability to decide what's best for our children. You speak of tolerance and acceptance, but if only it aligns with your views. Masks go against my religious views and everything that I believe and stand for, yet you do not give me that choice. Irrational recommendations will do no good, and in some cases, will do harm. Mask requirements are not necessary to stop the spread of the virus. Mask requirements present other health risks. Mask requirements give false sense of security. Mask requirements are difficult to enforce, especially with our young children. Mask requirements have fearful social consequences, especially among the young children. Ohio Department of Health, Ohio Department of Education COVID-19 Health and Prevention Guidance in Ohio K-12 Schools is not law. Additionally, I need you to understand the following, and I will email you these studies to back up what I'm saying. Children are not a driver of transmissions in schools, or anywhere for that matter. Masking children in schools does not appear to impact transmission within schools. It's low regardless of whether children are masked or not. Teachers and others who spend significant amounts of time with children appear to be reduced risk of death with COVID-19, and by the numbers, teachers are not dying at higher risk than other professions. In fact, they appear to be dying at a lot lower levels, exactly in line with the regular flu. To conclude, we have consistently deprioritized the essential needs of children. We must learn to tolerate some level of risk. It is clear that children's well-being is not your priority, and it's not in our guidelines set today. We all have jobs to do. You were elected for a term. Your term will come to an end. Mine does not. My job as a mother never ends, and I know what's best for my child. I am not here to tell you that COVID is not real. I'm here to tell you that I know what's best for my child, my child, my choice. Make mask a choice or resign today, because my term does not end, and my passion for my child will not either. So hear me today. My term does not end. So, I'll end by saying, I'm not going to tweak this, I'm going to tweak this a little bit. Hell hath no fury like a mother scorned. And here's another one for you. No hay amor más grande que el amor de una mamá. There is no passion like that of a mother for her child. If tolerance is so important to you, let me have a choice. I will take that burden from you. It is not your right to decide what's right for everybody. Let us have our choice. My term doesn't end. Let me do my job. Give me a choice, and do your job and focus on education. My child, my choice. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Miki.
Hello, my name is Miki. I speak to you tonight as a retired school counselor, the mother of three Upper Arlington graduates, the grandmother of two current elementary students, as well as a former longtime volunteer who worked on school climate issues for the district. Our family has always supported and trusted our schools. My husband and I even hosted one of the neighborhood meetings where school administrators explained the building campaign. I don't recall ever hearing anything at that meeting about the controversial bathrooms or the need to go to court in order to change building codes. I am in favor of utilizing some gender-neutral private bathrooms. They will be especially helpful for students who have gender, identity issues, and others who deal with physical handicaps. However, general-specific bathrooms, which are easily accessible during class-change times, must also be provided. That should eliminate the need and the expense for court action. It is doubtful that taxpayers want a court fight over building codes at the cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars for attorney fees. All I know about alleged misdeeds committed by our school board and administration is what I have read. I do understand that you have been accused of keeping the bathroom design quiet until recently, publicly claiming that legal bathrooms are available when you knew that they were too far away to be used between classes, and that the board violated Sunshine laws when authorizing legal action to change building codes. I would welcome your response to these allegations. If there is no response, citizens will assume that you did not act in good faith. I would also like to see our schools being compliant with existing building codes and providing both kinds of bathrooms. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nettie.
Our next one is Matthew M. Thank you for the opportunity to come back again. You all remember me from last month. Showed up, didn't know the rules, and didn't comply, apparently, so now I'm complying with the rules. I signed up in advance, and here I am. And you, of course, suggested that I have a separate meeting with Dr. Emhoff. Did that in a confirmation email. He, again, reiterated the rules and how this works when we have to address the board, right? So we're all in agreement that it's important to follow rules. So, rules are important.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nettie. Our next one is Matthew M.
Thank you for the opportunity to come back again. You all remember me from last month. Showed up, didn't know the rules, and didn't comply, apparently. So now, I'm complying with the rules. I signed up in advance, and here I am. And you, of course, suggested that I have a separate meeting with Dr. Emhoff. Did that, and in a confirmation email, he again reiterated the rules and how this works when we have to address the board, right? So we're all in agreement that it's important to follow rules. So, rules are important. They protect us all. They create a situation where we don't have things running amok and anarchy and all these type of things. And they're usually put in place to benefit the masses, the greater portion of the population. With that in mind, it seems to me that the state, of course, Kathy pointed out and these other folks pointed out, the state has their own rules, and it's called "building code." And the building code very simply states that there should be separate bathrooms, clearly marked for men and women. All we're asking here is that you follow the rules, just like you're so inclined to do here and so inclined to insist that I follow the rules. I'm going to insist that you folks follow the rules. Follow the rules and put separate bathrooms in. I'm concerned for the safety of my daughter and my son as well. And that's very simply it. It just, it all comes down to safety. Thank you.
Our next individual is Bishop.